Vice Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Crapman, Commissioner McMorris.
Here.
Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Carney. Thank you. Vice Chair, we didn't receive any.
It's not that nobody can vote on it, but it's normally appropriate to abstain if you haven't at least watched or reviewed the actual meeting itself. If you have done so, and you can certainly vote to approve the minutes based on what you observed.
All right, so let's go over the minutes. And I'm going to speak first, and I just found, I found one item as I was going through the minutes. Under the roll call for the May 13 meeting, Commissioner Lee's name is not.
So no to Vice Chair, thank you.
So when we approve the minutes, we need to approve subject to that correction. All right. Commissioner Crapman, Commissioner Lee, do you have any comments on the minutes? Anybody else have any comments?
I will abstain, but I just want to just note that in my absence, I really appreciate Chair Clawwitter's service to the community. I'm sorry that I missed his last meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you to him and recognize him for all of his service.
No, thank you. That's completely appropriate. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes subject to the correction requested.
I second.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Crapman.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Abstain due to my absence.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so.
So we only have three?
Oh, three, yes, and two abstention. Motion passed.
All right.
Yes, three. Three, zero, two.
Next thing we need to do is election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. So we want to open nominations initially first for the Chair. So.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Schwartz. He's got the most experience of any of us.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there other nominations for Chair? Okay. We will, okay, then we, I guess, we need to have a vote. Jackie, will you do the voting?
Yes, yes, Chair.
You should.
Uh huh.
For Chair.
Oh, motion first?
Well, you had a motion to nominate Commissioner Schwartz, and you had a second for that, so that's your motion right there.
All right, so let's start with Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Crapman.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Big yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero. We have a new Chair.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. Now we need to open nominations for Vice Chair. So nominations are open for Vice Chair.
But Chair, I nominate Commissioner Crapman to be a Vice Chair.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, are there other nominations? Okay, we have a nomination and a second, so Jackie.
Okay.
Yes, he is officially Chair.
Okay. Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Crapman. Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
The vote is five to zero. Congratulations, Vice Chair Crapman.
Now, okay, well, there's a Vice Chair thing here that you can, here, can we trade? Can we give this to Commissioner, to Vice Chair Crapman?
Vice Chair, there we go.
All right, thank you. Okay. Now we have a public hearing. We have one public hearing item tonight, and we will ask the planning manager, Samantha, would you go over the public hearing procedures tonight?
Yes, Chair, if I can have a moment. Or did it go? Or did you click? Oh, you clicked, okay. Okay. We will do this manually tonight. Congratulations, Chair and Vice Chair. The item before you this evening is a Zonta's Amendment, and that's ZTA 24003. This is another housing, Zonta's or housing-related Zonta's Amendment. As shown on the slide here, this is to continue on implementing the goals as identified in the certified housing element that was approved two years ago now. And last year, what came before the Commission was Program 22 and 23 relating to mixed-use housing associated with mixed-use projects. What's before the Commission this evening would be Program 21, and that are housing items related to emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing, and low-barrier navigation centers, and this is all a part of removing what is considered government constraints by the state. Next slide, please. And so the proposed Zonta's Amendment, we'll get right into it, starting with emergency shelters. The current existing code was approved by the city in 2011, and at that time, it was also to implement policies and programs contained in the prior fifth-cycle housing element. The proposed Zonta's Amendment this evening is to remove any texts that has subjective language, and again, in order to comply with state housing regulations. So the update applies to the zoning code, and again, it's to remove or to modify subjective requirements, and also to address parking requirements for emergency shelters. Next slide. And so the slide here shows the proposed amendments to the specific sections, again, eliminating any subjective language that reads to reviewing projects on case-by-case basis, anything that's subjective to additional staff reviews, and to make the language more clear as to the expected operational and design requirements for emergency shelters. So the underlined represents new texts. Strike-throughs are to delete, and anything without a strike-through or underlined is existing text, and this is just a section of, again, the existing code. Next slide. And the next proposed amendment applies to group homes, and this is where to eliminate any texts that refers to conditional use requirements for licensed group homes of six or fewer individuals. That is not something that the state finds acceptable, and so we're going back into the code to take out that section, which specifically states conditional use permits for group homes of six or fewer individuals, so we're just completely taking out that code section. Next slide, please. So the third, the following slides apply to new texts that the city's code does not have, but are current state requirements, first one being low-barrier navigation centers. And again, this is to show that it is a state requirement, and what the state does is identifies that it is a right, a use that is allowed by right in areas zoned for mixed use, as well as non-residential zones permitting multifamily uses, and this is taken directly from state law. Next slide, please. And then we get into the final two items, which is supportive and transitional housing. And again, this is to define the zones where the uses are allowed. Currently supportive and transitional housing is allowed in the city's R3 zone, so that's already in place, again, from the 2011 as a result of the fifth-cycle housing element. And this is just to add in additional regulations as defined by state law, just to make sure that the regulations are clear for whoever would like to submit an application for a project. Next slide, please. And so this is an example of some of the new texts. It provides definitions for what is supportive housing. Also, supporting housing is required to be deed restricted for a number of years, as well as income restricted as well. So this is just an example of a few of the texts. The full language is provided in the resolution that's attached to the staff report. Next slide, please. And also saying for transitional housing, it defines what is transitional housing. Transitional housing, unlike supportive housing, is intended to be more temporary, and it is to provide assistance, and the expectation is that individuals do move along in the program as they receive the assistance, and then eventually make room for other individuals that may need that same particular type of assistance. So this concludes Staff's presentation, again, as part of implementing the programs identified in the current housing elements. This is to add in texts as provided by the state within the city's local regulations, so that any project applicant wishing to make applications for these types of special housing uses, the regulations are clear. There are also a lot of references to state law, as well as health and safety regulations as well, so those are requirements. There is a lot of monitoring from the state for these types of uses, so although the projects do come before the city and is reviewed ministerially, there are a lot of oversights from the state. So this concludes Staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioners, do you have any questions, clarifying questions you want to ask?
I have a few.
Go ahead, please.
First question is, none of this applies to R1 residential areas, correct?
That is correct. Transitional housing, supportive housing and the navigation centers, it's not as explicit as the emergency shelters, where currently it specifically states that the use can be adjacent to any other zone except for R1. So that is not language that is included here, but if it's something that the Commission would like to add.
So I bring it up because, I don't know, maybe it was seven, eight years ago, I'm just, I said quickly, before I got to the position, on the sales, there was quite a kerfuffle about a group home going on the sales in the residential area. The rest of you are not happy about that. I don't know that it still operates, so I'm just curious if those buyers have some proof of this.
I can start, but that is a part of one of the items, where if the group home is six or fewer individuals, that is something that is allowed by right, because the way that a project like that, the house itself, would be per the zoning requirements of that particular zone, and the only difference would be that instead of being occupied by what's considered a traditional family, that it's made up of individuals that meet the state definitions and requirements for group homes, but in that particular case, that item, that is something that is allowed by state, that the city cannot restrict, and even this evening, that it's not something that goes through a discretionary or a public hearing process as well.
Okay, so it can't happen in R1?
Group homes, because I feel like we might be mixing a couple different types here. Yeah, but in the group, for group homes, that's correct. We can't prohibit them from R1.
Okay. That was my first question. Second question is, how many of these projects are pending?
Oh, there are no applications at the moment.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Chair, I have a quick question, just clarifications. This is a state requirement, and we are just trying to tweak to, like, for our own traditional requirements, right? Is it correct?
Right, thank you for the questions. Yes, this language is taken directly from state law with very little customizing at this time. So it is something that's already permitted by the state, and similar to ATU regulations, for example, or even SB9, a lot of it is already defined by the state, and the city is just adopting it for local.
Moving away from those, that state language is sometimes, in some respects, possible, but it takes some very specific findings and unique circumstances, and public health and safety declarations and things like that that you need to come up with, which are very difficult or near impossible to do unless you've got some really unique circumstances in your jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. And just a follow-up. For the parking requirements, are we kind of like deleting that requirement? Or I see on the number five, it says off-street parking shall be provided for every staff member, so we still keep that language in there, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all, Vice Chair.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I have some clarifying questions, but then the subsequent questions, that happens after a comment, right? I always get confused with this. Okay. Just to clarify, what I see on, it is, well, it's actually page three of the resolution, section, I think, yeah, 153, 1.162. Oh, wow, where are we at? Well, I don't know exactly how to, there's so many sub clauses, but it's where, it's the, one where it says, "This subsection shall remain in effect until January 1, 2027, and as of that date is repealed." Why is that?
Oh, that is also taken directly from the state regulation. I don't know if at that point it is to review the program at the state level, but that sunset date is actually defined by the state and just going forward.
So that's, but I'm assuming that sunset date is for the state law, which, so then we're saying we're going to also automatically repeal this whole section if that law, that state law does not remain?
I think you're making an excellent point here, and I think we should assume, when this goes before council, we should modify that a little bit differently to say that the subsection shall remain in effect so long as the state law remains in effect, because you're right, what could happen is the state could and likely will remove that sunset and just extend it, in which case ours would now be out of date without any, without having a subsequent action, so.
Okay, that makes sense, but then just to take it a little further, the state, the city, let's say, for example, it wishes to maintain the language here, even if the state repeals the state law that mandates some of this, are we allowed to do that? And is that an option the council could do if it wanted to? Or are we just saying we're going to automatically just get rid of this section if the state law goes away?
Well, as written, it would automatically go away, but yes, we do have the option to, if we wanted to, just say we want to adopt this in perpetuity, because it's not, even if the state removed the obligation that we do so, we could still do so.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I'm not saying we necessarily, I don't want to hamstring the council either, but I don't want to make it sound like we have to get rid of it. If they choose to keep it, they can. I just wonder if there's a way to note that state law is basically, it has a, you know, an expiration date, but could be extended, but I also think that the city, we don't want to imply the city has to just get rid of this, even if the state law goes away, if that's at the discretion of the council and, you know, recommendation of the Planning Commission, if we feel, I don't know if we can word it in some way so it doesn't imply kind of what I took from it.
It kind of depends on the intent of the Planning Commission and thereafter the council. My general recommendation would just be to delete this in its entirety, but if the policy was that we don't want this section, and we only want it to be there so long as the state is mandating it to be so, then we do want language like this in here. So I don't make that policy, but that's kind of the choice and where the recommendation would be.
Okay, I'm inclined to say just delete this part and leave it open-ended, but I'll let the Commission discuss that. The only other clarifying question I had was, I'm a little confused between the difference, even though I looked at these definitions, between navigation centers and transitional housing, what's the difference there? They seem very similar, but I'm not sure what the difference entirely is.
The way that staff understands the difference, low-barrier navigation centers are almost more similar to shelters, where they are more short-term and limited in timing, whereas transitional housing allows for longer stays, it was stated, up to a minimum of half a year, no longer than two years, so I think it's just operational differences, again, as defined by the state.
That's where I read it.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, go ahead. Commissioner Carney, you have a question?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. Samantha, I think you said this already, but just to verify, we're not approving this, we are recommending, we're approving a recommendation to the council. It's ultimately a council decision.
Correct, approving as proposed, approving with modification, or anything that the Commission does not agree with.
Right. Okay. It's time to do public comment. Clearly, there's still nobody here. Did we get anything, Jackie, on this item?
Chair Schwartz, we didn't receive any.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing and ask for comments from staff vis-à-vis the, it sounds like, let me start with this. If I understand our attorney correctly, we want to take away the, like, 2027 and just say, as long, at least as long as that provision remains in the.
Right. Do you, the question for you is, do you want this to stay the law until the council changes it in the future, if they can, or do you only want it to stay the law so long as the state mandates that it's the law? That's kind of the question, and if you want it to stay the law in San Gabriel regardless of what the state does, then we want to strike that entire subsection. And a future council could always repeal it again if they want to, but if we don't like this language at all, then we probably would want it to sunset along with the state when it's, if the state took that away. That's the deliberation that you'll want to make here to decide what direction you want to go in, and that recommendation will go forward to the council, and if staff takes a second look at this and agrees with your recommendation, then that makes it, will be a clean one going forward to council.
All right, Commissioner McMorris, it sounds like you would like to take the sunset out of this.
Well, my only thing is, is I think this is just, this particular clause is just stating what, that the state law expires, but then we're also implying that we're going one step further and just saying, this law's also going to, anything that has to do with that law that we've implemented here will also go away if it does. Ultimately, the city council may want to do that. I just, at a minimum, I think the wording should be changed that allows, that, you know, doesn't simply mandate or imply that it's just going to go away with state law. Obviously, if city council, like I said, they want it in there, they can, but if absolutely every single thing that was written in here in the amendments was purely to, you know, to basically abide by state law, and nothing had to do with our, kind of, obligations under our housing element plan, you know, then, I mean, I could see potentially, okay, let's just repeal it with state law, but I think, to me personally, I think some of these things help address our obligations in the housing element, so I don't want to just say, oh, it's going to go away. If state law goes away, I don't remember, I don't remember what you're suggesting for rewording.
And just to make it clear, if this section is removed, the council still has the choice to either keep it or repeal it. The only thing that's here right now is whether it happens automatically on that date. And as written, I agree with you, I don't like it that way, because if the state extends it in the interim, now our language is not matching. So if we want it to automatically go with the state, I would suggest we change it to that it shall remain in effect so long as section, whatever it is, remains in effect with the state.
That, first of all, makes sense. I would prefer that this part's just removed, and then we leave it up to the council to say, if this law is removed, the planning department or senior attorney says, oh, by the way, this law is gone, do you want to keep this anymore? You want to remove it? And then they can decide, but I'll leave that, I'll let the Commission discuss that. That's just my, I definitely think the wording should be changed, but I would prefer that that clause is just removed.
Okay, thank you.
So I.
Go ahead, Vice Chair. Go ahead.
So I agree with your wording, first of all. As long as the state law's in place, then this will be in place. And the reason being, this was put together to bring us into. And the reason being, this was put together to bring us into compliance with state law. We did not create this from our own studies, from our own, didn't create this law from our own research and deliberation and all that kind of stuff being handed down to us. So as long as it is handed down to us, then we should abide by the state law, but I don't think that we should continue to have it, because there might be good stuff in here, there might be bad stuff in here. We haven't studied it, the state has studied it at much higher levels. This is not, again, there's probably some good ideas here, and there's probably some bad ideas. To just add additional laws automatically, I wouldn't do that. So if it expires with the state, I'm inclined to, if it expires with the state, if this, if the city wants to renew it, all or part of it, they can do their own research and decide, this part's working, right? Group homes part is working, the load navigation is not working, and they can do their own research and figure it out. But that's my opinion, just the whole purpose of this was to bring us into compliance with state law. I don't want it to be another purpose.
So there's your point and counterpoint for automatic extension or not?
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chair, are we in deliberation already? Okay. So my personal point would be kind of similar to Vice Chair is saying, this is a state requirements, and then we are trying to abide by it, right? And if the state law goes away, I don't want another thing, another items on the council agenda to, like, appeal it or to remove it, right? So if it goes away, it goes away. And I also agree with Commissioner McMorris about the housing elements that the council hasn't addressed in our city, right? But I don't think this clause or whatever in front of us has anything to do with the housing that the council hasn't addressed. This is just about emergency shelter, low barriers, or whatever the language they put it in here, we are just trying to address the state requirements. So with that, I want to keep this clause in there, maybe with a little modification to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr, do you have any comments?
Not really. I feel like the rookie on the team at this moment, but I tend to agree, though, with what was said by my two colleagues. I tend to keep it in for the time being.
Keep it in with the modification.
So it sounds like we're likely to, more like, it sounds like there's more of a, okay, more likely interest in keeping it as long as the state has it in place, is what I'm hearing. But I'm open for a motion.
I move to approve with the agenda to the clause suggested.
I second that.
Yeah, I just want, I'm going to support it too, but are we done? I had some other questions within the floor. Is this just for this one?
Well, okay, so the motion was to, right now, was to prove everything as written, so I don't know if we want to go to a vote or if the person making the motion wants to withdraw his motion for further deliberation.
I'm open to hear Commissioner McMorris' opinion.
And just resolve that single issue for now, but.
Yeah, this is a different issue in here, so, yeah. Is that, that's fine, I'll just go ahead and, yeah.
Motion is withdrawn, okay.
Okay. The one thing I wanted to discuss was, so this has to do with supportive housing, and I see that, so supportive housing will be by right, given the new criteria, and it will have affordability restrictions for up to 55 years, but then I see at the bottom of page four, the last, section eight there, clause eight, that essentially the city, and it doesn't say may, but shall, reduce the number of those affordable, or those supportive housing units, if the project owner requests it. And I'm just a little concerned about that and why it's a shall instead of a may. The housing project is terminated through the fault of the owner, how do we, how might that happen, first of all? And then it says, project rental assistance or operating subsidies go away, you know, I mean, like, so what is a, an operating subsidy, what would that be like that goes away? And is the rental assistant, is that like section eight? Is that what we're talking about? Like, if that goes away or something else, or?
So staff cannot confirm whether it's section eight specifically, but it would be a subsidy from the state or any other agency. That is one of the provisions, that these be subsidized projects, and if for some reason the funding falls through and there's no longer funding for these types of projects, then it would not meet the regulations anymore for the project to exist.
And so, but we're talking then purely about funding that they are granted through state or federal, it's not private loans or something fall through or anything like that, right? Like, if they're, I'm just concerned about if there's an agreement made and supportive housing is supposed to be built, and then later on, there's a claim that, well, our loans that we thought we were going to get from a bank or something, or up here, it says the owner demonstrates through good faith efforts, the financial, they don't have the financial sources to support it now. So let's say it's built, and all of a sudden they decide, well, we, we're not making what we thought we would, and therefore, we can no longer continue to provide affordable housing in these units. Is that allowed? That would be what concerns me. If the federal funding that they're obligated to get by right, if they do these projects, goes away, I understand that, but if other, if another claim is made, I mean, I'm not, I like to think that all developers are good actors, but I know they're, just like any profession, there can be bad actors, and they're like, oh, we got this approved by right, and, but because of that, we get all of these subsidies, but now, all of a sudden, we're going to make a claim that we can't, it doesn't budget out, and therefore, we're not going to provide them anymore. That worries me, if that is allowed. If it's just the federal funding, I understand that.
Right, so the way that staff understands this regulation is that unlike a private development that relies on the private funding and investments, what makes these types of projects different is that at the forefront, the project does have to show that it is receiving some type of subsidized funding, again, either from the state or the federal government. So that's the, that's the difference between the two types of projects, that it's not your standard condominium project that the commission has, that has come before the commission, and sometimes it would be tied to income restrictions associated with whatever waivers. In this particular case, all of the standards are defined by the state, and one of the requirements is that they be subsidized projects. So the subsidies would have to be provided to the city at the time of submittal, as far as what that funding source is.
So you're saying it's not subject to the vagaries of private funding?
Correct.
It's, okay, I think that helps to clarify then, you know, what I was concerned about. I guess I'm just wondering why these other things are in here after that, that they demonstrate, so I understand if the supportive, the federal and state goes away, I get that, there's no longer, they can't, so that makes sense. Any change in the number of supporting housing units is restricted to the minimum necessary to maintain project's financial feasibility? What is a project's financial feasibility, how is that determined, and how does that come into play with? What if, what if they determine a project is no longer financially feasible to them, but they're still receiving federal and state subsidies?
Can I chime in? Okay, because I actually work in this space, so supportive housing is, you know, you're providing a subsidy to the person's rent or whatever, but you're also providing, like, wraparound services and, like, drug counseling and stuff like that. And they, the state provides that funding, so does the federal government. So what this says here is, if the state, the federal government withdraw their funds, then these other things kick in. So first, the owner has to make a good faith effort to find another source of funds, like a private source of funds, say, you know, the Omniscent Foundation or whatever, some Rose Hills Foundation, you know, places that support these kinds of activities, but they're private, they're private donation. Okay, so the owner makes a good faith effort to try to find alternative funds, because usually owners that are in this position, they generally are well-intended, they're trying to help these people, right? That's why they're getting into this, that's why they're not building condos or whatever. So they'll try to find another source of funds, and then if they can't find those sources of funds, then they can restrict how many people there they can serve without losing money, right? So if the subsidy's not there, then, you know, if, even if you're well-intentioned into the best charity in the world, if you're consistently losing money, you're not going to be able to help anybody for long. So that will shut down the charity. So they have to do a financial feasibility study and say, okay, we can keep 25% or whatever the number is, open, and the rest will have to go to market rates or whatever.
And none of that kicks in, though, until, like you said, they lose the federal and state.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how I read this.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, that makes more sense to me, thank you.
Okay, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chair, if I may.
Yes.
In addition to our fellow commissioners discuss, I want to understand if that situation happens, right? What the city obligations or liabilities it is, and what the city can do, you know, to go after the developer to make things happen or to encourage them to, like, fix a problem? So what, what role the city plays?
I was composing the alternate language there and sending it off to Sam, so I missed, I missed part of your question. Do you mind repeating it for me?
Okay, yeah, so like, in addition to the discussion that we just had, right? So I want to understand what kind of obligation the city has, or what kind of liability the city has if that happens, right? Meaning, like, the federal and state funding falls through, right? And, you know, like, anybody can sue anybody, right? So there probably will be some kind of organizations trying to sue the city because of this, right? Because of the false hope, right? So what kind of obligation or liability that the city has, right? And then my second question is, can city go after the developer and then make, to fix the problems?
So are we talking about the previous conversation about the reduction in residency? If funding falls through, if subsidies fall through? So, I mean, the city's obligations are, and it says shall, allow for that reduction, and all we have to do is take in that application and make those findings that are specified in the code. The liability for us would be if we were to deny it frivolously, not, not take the request in, not grant them that reduction if they do in fact meet the findings. It's hard to say with new housing laws, the laws are coming out much faster than the court cases describing them, so in the, in the housing world, we are always at great risk because the changes are coming so rapidly. That said, right, at this point in time, the liabilities and are mostly, and burdens are mostly being taken on by cities with a stronger opposition to state housing measures, and they have not been successful so far in their, in their legal challenges. But those cities have taken very, very aggressive, state you cannot tell us what to do positions, which is not the case here. So I don't see a great risk or liability for the city in adopting this, of course, because in this case, we're complying with state laws, and is that getting to your concerns at all?
I'm just trying to understand, like, what's the liability standpoint from the city, right? So if you're saying, if I understand correctly, you're saying that there is not much liability to the city if we adopt this?
Correct, as so long as the city, you know, operates in good faith in accordance with the direction that's in here. If we were to say, we're not going to allow supportive and transitional housing, and state you can't tell us where, when we can place them, that would impose liability and risk to us. But adopting these measures and following them would put us in a low-risk, non-existent risk category.
Okay, what about my second question of, like, if the funding falls through and developer is not trying to get, like, second or third funding to, to, like, keep up with their promise, right? So there is a fake promise out there, like, support, there would be some kind of housing for, you know, whoever it needs. What's the city's role in that situation to fix the problem?
It's the developer's role to fix the problem, it's the city's role to determine if this developer has taken the necessary steps and done it in a way that impacts it as minimally as possible. So it's the developer's responsibility to find that alternate financial support, it's the city's responsibility to make a determination that they have done so in good faith. It's the developer's responsibility to develop the project's budget and feasibility, it's the city's responsibility to look at it and say, is that truly a feasibility issue or not? And the developer has to open its books to the city in order to do that. What's the third finding? Oh, minimize this tenant disruption, so the developer has to do that. They're going to change it, the developer has to find a way to support the housing in a way that minimizes the tenant disruption, and it's the city's responsibility to pull, just to monitor and police that, make sure that they're doing that properly. But it's not the city's responsibility to make the project feasible or to redesign the project on behalf of whoever, the tenants or the applicant.
So what you're saying, just to, if I understand correctly, if all this is to occur, would it, would possibly occur? Chances of it are slim and none if it's federal and state funding.
Yes.
But if it happened, the city's responsibility is not a lot different than it would be if there was a, an item on the agenda. there was a, an item on the agenda to consider a project. In this particular case, you're describing a situation where, again, we would have to consider, probably the council would have to consider the project. Maybe it would come to us in terms of the funding issue. And our responsibility would be to make a determination, in that case, make a determination.
I don't know that this would come back before the planning commission.
But if it even went to the council, it would be, or staff, it would, it would be, have to, their determination has to be made.
Yes. I, I read this to be a staff-level determination at this point. You intended something different, but.
No, it specifics lease states by right.
Yeah. Because it says shall. I mean, it's just, staff is just taking on a monitoring role here, too, to say, to throw up a red flag if, if something nefarious is going on, right? If they're, they get, they lose some partial subsidy and now they want to claim more than they're entitled to. Staff now can stand up and go, whoa, timeout. No, you can't. But otherwise, it's, it, this is pretty ministerial.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, let me just make sure. Is that clear to everyone?
Chair, yeah. It's, kind of, I was trying to understand what's the liability. So according to city attorney, I think the liability is very minimal. And the city role to, like, support the, the housing needs in this case is, kind of, we're just being a police in this case and not much we can do about it.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, I concur with that.
That's what I understand. Okay. If everybody's good, then we can go back and cycle back through for a motion.
Were there any other comments or was that it before we have the motion? Didn't want them, early motion again.
Sorry.
Should I repeat my motion or?
Yes.
I move to approve with the amendment to the sunset clause as proposed by the city attorney.
I second that.
Okay. Okay, Jackie. Let's have a vote.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Krupman.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
The vote is five to zero. Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public hearing item. It's time for comments from the planning manager. So.
Uh, no comments, Chair.
Okay. Then, are there any commissioner comments?
I'll just, yeah. No, I just want to welcome our new commissioner. Again, I wasn't, I wasn't here for the last meeting. So George, welcome. And I just wanted to say, I, I just got back from a wonderful trip to Japan. I, I thought it was a lovely country. And I recommend if anyone is thinking about visiting that they, they try to do so, you know, if they can. So, but that's, that was the reason for my absence and I'm happy to be back. So.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm curious to hear more. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting, our planning commission meeting, and to the next meeting, regular meeting on Monday, July 8th, 2024, at 6:30 here in the, the council chambers.